My name is Dr. Buck Kluchay. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you being here this afternoon. Thank you so much for taking time out of your day to come and be a part of this very important and I believe historic time that we're living in. The invocation's gonna be done by Ms. Beryl Lamede and the pledge by Sheriff Tim Sonnier, so if you would all please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we are thankful. We are thankful that we woke up healthy enough this morning to gather here. We are thankful that we woke up in a nation where we are still free to gather. Lord, we are also thankful that for the past seventeen or eighteen months, we've learned some things. We've learned to value our health. We've learned to cherish time with our loved ones. Lord, we're facing battles right now on so many fronts. We're facing corruption. We're dealing with lies, deceit, and fraud. But we take comfort, Lord, in knowing that you see all of it and that you're not surprised by any of it. Lord, you could have placed each one of us anywhere in time and anywhere on the face of this earth, and you chose to place us here and you chose to place us now. Lord, guide us so that we can be counted worthy, so that on that day when we stand before you face to face, when we answer for all of the actions that we take here and now, that we will be found to have brought your light into darkness, to bring your truth, the love of the gospel, to the whole world at every opportunity. Lord, we ask you to watch over our students, our children. We ask you to watch over employees and to guide the bosses with the choices that are before us. And Lord, as we're gathered here today, we ask you to be with our military, both at home and abroad, with all that they're dealing with today. And grant us wisdom, Lord, in the matters we're discussing here today. Let us have a spirit of peace, a spirit of unity, the witty ideas that you've promised in your word, to go forth and do your will from here, this day. In Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. I would like to state, if I would, can, please, the purpose of this meeting, and then we'll do the introduction of the speakers in the panel to you. I have lived in this community for thirty-seven years, and from the very beginning, I was taken with the people's concern and care for each other, as well as their resiliency in times of crisis such as hurricanes. We have come here today to exercise and protect our freedom of speech, especially for our children and our grandchildren. I do believe this is really a historic time that we're living in and will be looked back upon. We have come together to bring our concerns, our passions, to be heard. Everyone, everyone wants to be heard, but we want to do this in a respectful manner. We want to control our anger, be willing to listen to each other with the same kindness and respect that we would like for somebody to give us when we're speaking. So no boos and jeers, please. You don't have to agree, but you don't have to boo and jeer. Right now, we may be a divided community, but with love and respect, we don't need to continue to be divided. We are stronger together, even though we may have different opinions on how to solve this crisis. We are here about our freedom of speech and about our constitutional rights. I thank God that we live in a country where we have freedom of speech and the right to gather in peaceful groups. We are here to peacefully and legally stand against unconstitutional mandates. So that's the purpose. That's why we're here. I'd like to introduce your panel to you this evening. We'll start with Dr. Steve Allier-Vison, and I practiced that name. I probably still don't get it right. But you know, he's the one with the hard name, so you'll remember him. Our sheriff, Dr. Tim Sonnier. Our president, Gordy Dove, was supposed to be here, but he couldn't make it. We have State Representative Beryl Lamede, State Representative of District 51, State Representative Kathy Edmiston of Gonzales, District 88, and Louisiana Senator Mike Facy of District 20. Our speakers in order are Mr. Claston Bernard, husband father, Christian Arthur, entrepreneur, a Jamaican immigrant who came to LSU and joined the track team where he became national champion. He ran for Congress, second district, earlier this year, and hopefully we will see his name on the ballot again, right here. And then we have Mr. Chad Walker, pharmacist here in Homa, and Ms. Jessica Domang, councilwoman of District 5. We will begin with Mr. Bernard, and you want to get this mic right up next to you, officer?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. Few housekeeping items. I'm gonna say housekeeping because I like to do it. In order to maintain freedom, your government must be restrained. We, the people. But you know, he said, "I'm a Jamaican immigrant." And one of the greatest gifts you can ever have is, as an immigrant to this country, you're standing and you're facing the flag, and you have hands across your chest, and they say, "You are now an American." That is a wonderful gift. And with this comes these responsibilities. But these responsibilities are not an infringement on your freedoms. These are what restrain the government, the Bill of Rights and the rules that we have. It's not to restrain who we are. But anyway, I'll start with this, a little motivational story. It seems sad at first, so let's start with this. You know, growing up in Jamaica, I wanted to go to college. I wanted to get a college degree. I read a lot of books, and I read about universities, and you know what? I said, "You know what? I want to do that." So I ended up in an all-boys boarding school, the only all-boys boarding school in Jamaica. That's merit-based. You don't get there because of how you look or who you know. If you can't do the work, you just can't stay there. So I ended up there. So I'm there. I'm a guy from a home, you know? We didn't have a whole lot of wealth. But my great-grandfather had said to my dad, "You want to change your children's life? Invest in their education." So my dad did everything he could to get us the best education money could buy. And it wasn't easy. He traveled to Canada at times to work in people's farms, even though he was a mason, to supplement the money to put us all through the schools we got in. So while I was in high school, I was like, "How do I go to college? The universities in the Caribbean and the one in Jamaica is too expensive. What do I do?" And at thirteen, someone gave me a book. God doesn't make mistakes, you know that? And the book was a guy on the cover. He ran for president recently, Dr. Ben Carson, a gifted hands. And when I read his story, I was like, "Wow, his story's similar to mine." I thought America was the land of opportunity and everything, but it doesn't mean you don't have to work. Benjamin Franklin was very keen when he was also telling the immigrants from Europe, "You have to come here and you have to make life. You have to work hard." But also, there was a guy at my high school who ended up at UT Arlington. He was also an Olympian, and he had a scholarship to study engineering. So I said, "That's my way out." So in 1995, '96, we had a new coach that came from the United States of America to work at my high school to coach track and field. So we have inter-dorm competition for track and field events. So for my dorm, in order for us to win, I did eleven events in one day. So my coach said to me, "Hey, Claston, I want you to do the decathlon, the heptathlon at the high school championship. Track and field is a big event in Jamaica, massive." And he said, "You can do the heptathlon." And I said, "What is that?" He said, "Seven events." And I said, "I can't do that. That's too many." And he said, "You just did eleven in one day. What are you talking about?" So then I said, "Hey, what are all the events?" And he told me the events. I said, "I can't high jump. I can't hurdle. I can't long jump." He said, "You have the talent to do it." And you know, you will see some of the similarities when I start talking about America, what that means. And he said, "You can do this." So he started trying to prepare for the other events, but at the same time, I was very good athlete in running, the throws, even though I was a skinny guy, I could throw the shot, put in discuss, and I could run a good four hundred meters and run the hundred meters really fast. So I didn't have time to learn the hurdles because my high school had to build hurdles. We didn't have the resources to buy hurdles that fast, but we had a great woodwork shop, and the teacher built us some hurdles. Well, I didn't have a chance to practice any hurdles. In Jamaica, they have a massive event before the championships. It's called Field Events Championships. So I thought, you know, I went in as one of the best discussing shot put throw, and I could run on the four-by-four, and I was one of the favorite to win the discuss in the high school championships. And my coach said, "You know what? I didn't enter you for any of your strong events. I entered you for the hurdles." I said, "What?" He said, "I entered you for the hurdles. I said, "I want you to go out there, and I just want you to finish that race." The only time I fooled around a hurdle before that was just going over it once. Didn't know what to do. So I lined up the field that was supposed to compete in the high school championship. Two weeks later, I'm with the guys of heptathlon. Anybody who's familiar with track and field, they typically try to put decathletes, our guys, in similar likes to compete against each other. So I ended up in the race with the guys who were heptathletes. And I lined up in the blocks, and I'm looking down all the way to the finishing line. I'm like, "What do I do?" You know, I'm sitting there, I'm like, "I can't back out now." So I lined up for the hurdles, and I'm looking. The gun went off. I was the first guy out of the blocks, over the first hurdles, the first hurdle. Got to the second hurdle, had to back up. I didn't know what to do. So after that, I backed up and I high jumped the hurdle, scissors kick. And that's what I did the whole time. And the stadium was packed, and all I could hear was the stadium just laughing. People were like in pandemonium, like, "What is he doing?" And I could remember getting to the seventh hurdles, and I could see the guys who were in my race walking back to the starting line. And you know what? I finished the race, and I looked at my teammates, and they were hauled over just laughing hysterically. And I heard some people say, "He just made a fool of himself." My high school is the top prestigious academic school at the time. Like, man, he's an embarrassment. But I remember what my coach said. He said, "I want you to finish the race." He didn't say, "How or, you know, what time." He said, "I just wanted you to do that. That is important, finish the race." And you know, I walked back to him and said, "You did it." And then after that, it was two weeks between that and the major events. You guys, some of you guys might know of Usain Bolt. That's where Usain Bolt got his start of the high school championships in Jamaica. So for two weeks, my coach had me learning just to clear the hurdle and gain a rhythm, for two weeks. And why it's important to read and understand your history, and for me, that's one of the things I love about America, is that my dad, he just gave us books, and we had to figure out what was in it. And there was a poem by, I think, Wasward, "The Heights by Great Men." And I was eight years old when I learned that poem in grade three. And it was about a tall, skinny guy who didn't know how to handle himself. They had a story to it in my high school book. And he was clumsy. He didn't know what to do. He didn't know how to execute, but he just kept working. So while he was, while he was doing that, you know, it just kept coming to my head, "Keep doing it. Keep working hard." And for two weeks, I pretty much neglected everything because I was pretty talented as an athlete. A lot of universities had started paying notice to my talent, but I wanted to now become a decathlete. But the hurdle was pretty much the first, it was the first hurdle for me to decide if I could become a good decathlete. And I remember going to the high school championships, and they had the preview, and the preview said, "Claston Bernard can win the heptathlon if he's able to finish the hurdles." If! So I remember lining up, you know, once people, once you've made a fool of yourself. People like to be entertained. Yes, they do. People like to be entertained. And I'm looking. I'm looking at the hurdles, and I'm like, "Okay, are you ready for this?" Got in the blocks, I could hear, I could see the people. I could see them waiting in anticipation, you know, touching their friends, "Hey, hey, he's up, he's up, you know, he's up." And I remember putting my head down. The gun went off. Again, I was the first guy out of the blocks, over the first hurdle, the second hurdle, third hurdle, and I'm expecting the guys now to catch me at the third hurdle. And I just kept running, and I kept running, and I kept expecting them. And before you know it, I was the first guy over the line. And the stadium was like, "Was he acting two weeks ago?" No, I just believed. Our founders believed. When the pilgrims came here in 1620, they believed. It was cold. It was rough. They were being prosecuted like we are today by the tyrant, the lawbreaker, Governor John Bell Edwards, King John. They didn't give us a chance. They didn't. And to make matters worse, when the pilgrims came on land in December of 1620, they went and tried communism. They did. Imagine that. Imagine you're starving, and you, your default is communism. That's where they're trying to take us. So they didn't give us a chance. But fast forward, they did figure out that, you know what? This will not work because God gives us intrinsic rights, inalienable rights, absolute rights. The governor don't think the Constitution protects absolute right. You should ask him, "What is inalienable rights or inalienable rights?" They might not be synonym, but inalienable mean it comes not from the government, but something bigger than the government. That is what this is about. I was not given a chance to finish the hurdle race, but you know what? I was able to make it, not just to college, but as a sophomore, I was an Olympian. I finished second in the NCAA's as a sophomore. I was NCAA champion by the time I was a senior. When I graduated, I was number seven in the world in the decathlon because I was able to cross that hurdle. The pilgrims were able to get through the history of the struggles, coming across the Atlantic, dealing with that harsh winter, dealing with the starvation, failing through communism, and they laid the peace. The peace, when we hear about natural rights, intrinsic rights, they laid it. They ran away from what we are dealing with today to start a new country. So in 1776, when the peace was finally laid together, and the patriots says, "No longer will we accept this tyrant or this tyranny who continued to impose on our rights." They had the foundation because they believed. It was tried. King George, he wasn't serious, but the patriots were serious. We have to be serious because you know what? He had to accept John Adams in England, in his palace, as the ambassador of America, which they were making fun of, saying, "American ambassador? How could that be possible?" The founders were willing to do what was necessary to stand up for their God-given inalienable rights. You cannot have freedom if there's no God. You cannot have rights if there's no God. Capitalism sadly has been misconstrued, while capitalism does not give anyone a right to own property in a person. See, that's a mistake that we made because, again, in 1865, when we fought that civil, well, in 1861, when we started that civil war, that was after the courts. Imagine that. The U.S. Supreme Court, that some people think is not infallible, ruled that blacks were properties. A civil war was fought because no one has a right to a person. So guess what? When people say capitalism, our slavery was about capitalism, first of all, capitalism is a moral system predicated, and God, the creator, that we are able to establish our own value into who we are based on what we do. No one has a right to us as a person. So the civil war was the basis for us to say, "You know what? We cannot continue down this pathway because the rights that we have is given to us by God." So in 1776, this country was put together beautifully. It recognized that we control our destiny, not John Bell Edwards, not King John, not the CDC. And I'll say this, there are a number of legislatures here. Washington, D.C., is not where the battle is going to be won. It has to be won here in Louisiana. If you want to send a message to D.C., then we start changing things in our state legislature. We start holding that lawbreaker in the governor's mansion responsible for the unconstitutional mandates that he continued to heap on Americans. We're at a different time. We're at a different moment. Parents, why do you continue to allow your children to be abused by bureaucrats? It is your right to make your children productive members of society, not the government. Where did it say the government owned anyone? Where? Where does it say that? Where does it say the government have a right to our liberty or property or to our lives? Where? Show me where? But here we are today. We are begging an inferior creation to recognize what God has given us. I'm a conservative. I believe in the transcendent. I believe that our rights come from God. I believe the order is God, it's science, it's a family, because God created the heavens and the earth. His laws are what they are. They're laws because they work. With those, He created man and woman. From the man and the woman came the family. And like we are today, we have come together and we formed the government. We have a sheriff to help deal with some of the people, or the people who believe that they have a right to our properties. That's why we have that. Now, the government is inferior to the family. So why do we continue to allow someone to violently or use force to suppress who we are? I'm not advocating violence, but the reason why we have a sheriff and we equip police officers with guns is to violently protect us because our children mean something. Husbands, our wives mean something. We have to protect them. Our health means something. Because we're rejecting, or some people are saying, "We don't want the vaccine," doesn't mean we are saying we're going to try to infect and kill the whole world. The right to try is important. The right to fail is important. The right to live in a free society is important. I stand here as an immigrant, telling everyone here, "This is the greatest country to live in." I have seen the world. I have seen this country inside out. Louisiana, we have a great state. And I'm gonna be as real as possible. Until our legislature do what is necessary, the people will continue to suffer, starting with the school board. The city councils. Parish councils, presidents, mayors. We need to start behaving that our rights belong to us. It says the consent to be governed. It said the consent. So do you consent for your children to be muzzled? Mothers who have held their children to their breast and nursed them, or put a bottle in their mouth, are you telling us that the government knows better how to raise and care for your children than you do? Fathers who go out there and work till they bleed, and even mothers, some people don't even make it home. Are you telling us that the government knows better how to protect and to care for your family? By the way, who trusts the government? This is an ask, who trusts the government? Because the government was not instituted to do what God gave us the rights to do. And when we delegate or we consent to them, we did not consent to tyrants. So let this be a rallying cry. Let this be a moment that Louisiana changed the trajectory of the state once and for all. If you're not about God, if you're not about family, if you're not about liberty, if you're not about humanity, human dignity, choices, then you have no business representing us. The good old boys. The good old boy system needs to change. The spirit that's within us is God's spirit. It's the spirit that moved the world. And I'm asking you guys, pray to God, cry out to Him. The pilgrims did. The founders did. The former slaves did. MLK Junior did. We should not stop praying. But you know what they never did? They didn't surrender, and they didn't give up their rights. Businesses should not be doing what they did to blacks in the 1890s with Plessy B. Ferguson. That shouldn't be happening today, but it's happening in New Orleans, where you need vaccine passports. You know, even during slavery, blacks had to walk around with papers to show that they were free. Is that where we want to go back? So let's send a message today. No more. Enough is enough. Thank you. God bless you.
I'd also like to recognize Representative Joe Argeron that's here today, I believe, House District 54. Your voice is powerful. It's being heard. Next, we have Chad Walker, a nuclear pharmacist, gonna share it with you.
I'm a local pharmacist. My background is mostly hospital and nuclear, but most recently, I've been working in a hospital, kind of semi-retired. I want to thank everybody for inviting me here, and I thank everyone that is here, especially folks from the panel. I'm honored and humbled to speak to you today. I do not consider myself to be an expert on COVID-19. I was told that all of those guys were busy today. That's true. The true experts and the heroes are the physicians and the medical professionals that are successfully treating patients with positive outcomes each and every day. Oh, I lost my cord. Okay, thank you. I do, however, listen to what those experts say, and I've been paying close attention. Can you hear me okay? The mic was a bit high, right? But be aware that what I'm about to say is very controversial. For every point that I will make just about, there's another point that is an opposing view. You can be sure that at this very moment, there's some twenty-something-year-old in his mom's basement. mom's basement by himself, wearing a mask, being paid to fact-check and debunk and hide or make it go away completely, the work of highly accomplished and credentialed scientists and physicians. So we just need to quickly figure out who are we going to believe and what we're going to believe because you know it's out there. So folks, we are in an information war right now. And right now, the mandate-only crowd has the heavy artillery and the high power and they're coming after us. And so we've got to stay informed, we've got to stand up, and we've got to stand up for what's true and what our rights are and just hang in there and not be pushed around. So what nobody's really talking about is prevention other than vaccines, okay? But there are some people out there that have got some great information that we can use, I think, and I'd like to share with you and take it for what it's worth, but they're finding some very good results with it and it's alternative considerations, okay? Now, some of the recent headlines are kind of coming into play where the drug companies are making a lot of money. Have you ever heard, if you want to find the... Yes? Can you hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. All right. I gave you a few minutes of grace. If... Have you ever heard the old saying, "If you want to find the truth, just follow the money"?
Yes.
There's money in this, okay? So did you know that Big Pharma spent over $6 billion lobbying politicians in the last 18 years or so? It's a cycle. The drug companies make the money, they pay the lobbyists, they make the campaign donations, they get the favorable regulations, they get the favorable approvals, whatever, okay? That's how it works. And oh, they're not always right. They don't always tell us the truth. CDC, flip-flops again, fully vaccinated people, they found are spreading the virus. So what are the mandates about? Why do we have to be vaccinated if we're gonna spread the virus anyway? Okay? CDC admits this. Oh, and by the way, those tests that they took last year, my goodness, they sent out a letter on... When was it? Leave my glasses here. July 21st, thank you. July 21st, they sent out this letter. I had to break it up to be able to fit it on the slide. But if you read a little further down in that press release, the highlighted sentence there, it says, "CDC encourages laboratories to consider the adoption of multiplex methods that can facilitate detection and differentiation of SARS-CoV-2 and influenza viruses." So does that mean that we were testing for flu and COVID at the same time and they couldn't differentiate? My goodness. They kind of hit that. And again, about the money. The FDA kind of operates a lot like the tax collectors of Jesus's day, okay? They're funded by the government, but yet they get their real money from seeing how much they can extract from the companies that they regulate. The fees, if you want to expedite something, they have an expedite fee, on and on and on. And so they can extract money from the people that they regulate. And in turn, they can give those guys what they need. So brings me to my next topic, just real quickly. I'm not gonna stay on vaccines for a minute, but people say, "Well, what's the big deal? Why don't you just get vaccinated? Why not do it?" Okay, well, I think we all know someone that's had an adverse reaction from the vaccine. It may not have been severe, but they do have severe ones. I read this week about a 14-year-old in Atlanta, young boy that had cardiomyopathy and he nearly lost his life. He entered the emergency room two days after his vaccine. First things the doctor asked him when they saw him was, "Have you had the vaccine recently?" Well, obviously, they've seen this before, right? They knew what they were looking for, but we're not hearing this in the media. They're not talking about it. We're not getting it. But what the real concern is are the long-term effects for the population itself. Can the vaccine take our own immune system and turn it against us? And make it non-functional to where initially the vaccine and this, I don't know if you can see the slide, but initially, it is a neutralizing antibody. It covers up the first variant, the first COVID, okay, virus. But as it mutates or as the vaccine weakens, then it becomes a non-neutralizing antibody. And so that can lead to allowing the virus to come into our cells and destroying us and our immune system can't do anything about it. So it leads to this condition, it's called antibody-dependent enhancement. And basically, it occurs when antibodies are generated during an immune response, they recognize and bind to a pathogen, but they are unable to prevent infection. Instead, these antibodies act as a Trojan horse, allowing the pathogen to get into the cells and exacerbate the immune response. So this is what we're concerned about, but people don't, they don't hear this. They just say, "Why don't you get the vaccine? Just go on." So what does CDC say about prevention of the virus? So these are the recommendations that the CDC makes for us. Not a lot of hope there, but I do want to give you some hope. There are some resource organizations out there that are doing some great work with their patients, they're having favorable outcomes, and they're America's frontline doctors. And I've got the website up. Are you familiar with them? Awesome. Ivermectin is on there, but for prevention... Do you like ivermectin? For prevention, it's actually optional. You don't need to take it unless you may be at a high risk. Vitamin D is very important. I've heard one immunologist say that there's no such thing as the flu season, you know, when there's less days of sun. We don't experience a lot of that here with the, you know, short, short days in the wintertime, but he said, "There's no such thing as a flu season." It really is a misnomer. It should be called the low vitamin D season, okay? Early on, that was one of the commonalities amongst the people that died with COVID-19 was low vitamin D. So I would encourage you to look at this protocol real closely. Vitamin C, quercetin, it's a bioflavonoid. Helps prevent infection. It strengthens the immune system. And then melatonin is a very strong medication as well. It has beneficial properties for antiviral and also... Losing the word here, I'm sorry. But it's very important in prevention. And then gargle mouthwash as well.
Chad, zinc.
Zinc. Zinc? I missed the zinc. Zinc is extremely important. Zinc is extremely important as well. There was a study by the Cleveland Clinic that showed that zinc alone helped prevent 28% of the infections of COVID-19. And then additional prevention measures, general health improvement, increased regular exercise, manage the risk factors, lose weight, blood pressure, we know all of these, okay? Stop smoking if you can, take your medication properly, and then reduce the inflammatory intake from the dietary sources. And this is the early outpatient protocol if you do get COVID. All the supplements are there as well, but ivermectin is added at the top of the list, generally a dose of .4 to .6 milligrams per kilogram for about five days. And the fluoxamine, flu... Fluvoxamine, excuse me, fluvalm, it's actually OCD medication, and it's been found to have antiviral effects. And then a pulse oximeter is added to this as well, just to have on hand so you know when your oxygen levels have fallen. If they're below 94, 95, you're beginning to get in trouble, so be careful. Okay, hydroxychloroquine, this one, it's an old drug. It's considered very safe, it's got antiviral effects. It's getting overshadowed just recently by ivermectin because they're having such favorable results with ivermectin. People are kind of forgetting about hydroxychloroquine and they're shifting over. Regeneron infusion, this is found helpful in early treatment, within the first seven days. It's a combination of two monoclonal antibodies. It helps the body to fight infection. Administered at the hospital infusion center, so you should get a referral from your physician, tell them you would like to do this, and they will know where to refer you. Possible side effects, lowering your blood pressure, dizziness and nausea. And hydroxychloroquine precautions, there are several that you need to watch out for. These are generally seen in patients that take hydroxychloroquine for a prolonged period of time, especially the rheumatoid arthritis patients and lupus patients. They would be on this for their entire life. And so they'll see side effects where you won't see it in five days, okay? But there's a few things to watch out for. And then recommended for use only under the direction of a physician. Medical history is required. Ivermectin, FDA-approved '98 for treatment of parasitic diseases. It's on the WHO's list of essential medications. Given a lot, lot of history, okay? Nobel Prize for parasitic infections, and it has exhibited highly potent ability to prevent replication, excuse me, replication of the SARS-CoV-2 and to suppress inflammation. And then, very important, January 14th of this year, NIH changed their recommendation in usage from against usage to neutral. So they're shifting in the right direction for us. This is some of the trials that are going on that have been conducted and some of the improvements that have been seen. So it's real data, guys. It's not hocus-pocus stuff. Everywhere you look on the internet or Facebook, this will be shielded. There's a few precautions with ivermectin. Side effects, headache, dizziness, muscle pain, nausea, diarrhea. And it increases the effects of certain drugs that undergo hepatic metabolism such as warfarin and antifungals can interact with immunosuppressants. So be careful. Don't take this without the advice of a physician. Avoid alcohol. Veterinary products, not recommended in humans. They may have some impurities that we just can't tolerate, so be careful. And the doses are weight-based, so it's easy to take too much or not enough. This is from the US Pharmacist this year, January. So is it, they were already looking at it. Is it inexpensive to parasitic? And then this is what they had to say about it. They had an independent meta-analysis, they calculated the chance that ivermectin is ineffective, meaning it doesn't work in COVID-19, to be one in 67 million. Those are pretty good odds, okay? Pretty good odds. It puts ivermectin in the same position as these monoclonal antibodies, convalescent plasma, which are widely used to treat infections. It has several advantages over these therapies, however, because it's low cost, easily available, requires no special handling of storage, long history of safety, is an oral tablet, can be used by patients at home early in their disease course. And this is referencing also the FLCCCA, and it also contends that it can be used to prevent transmission. So a few closing thoughts, all right? Medical information and advancements are being released almost daily, hourly. They're coming fast and furious. As these trials finish up or they get to a certain point, we're getting new information. At the hospitals, they're changing the protocols faster than we can keep up with them. Prevention and treatment will likely evolve very quickly. Stay alert, engaged and informed. Communicate with your trusted medical professionals, local elected officials and local advocacy groups such as We the People. And I would leave you with that and appreciate your time.
And if you would please welcome with me Jessica Domang, Councilwoman, District 5.
I don't have quite as eloquent as presentations as these two gentlemen right here have, but I just want to say, Mr. Clayston, if you ever come to Terrebonne Parish, we will make sure you get elected, sir. So a little bit about me, and you know, there's lots of familiar faces here, which is fantastic to see. I am a social worker. I live here in Homa. I'm married and have two little girls. My dad was a shrimp boat captain. My mother was an immigrant, actually, as well, and she immigrated from Australia, so I'm half-Australian. But being a daughter of a shrimp boat captain meant I worked. I worked my entire life and I never stopped working and I'm still working. And then two years ago, I decided that I wanted to work for you and so I ran for office because I want to make a change in my community. And so that's what we do. You elected us to work for you. It might not always be the easiest job, but we do it and we, you know, we do it because we love this community and we love the people here. Because I work for you and because you guys have put me in this position, it's put us... It's been an odd term because we took office in January and then literally two months after we took office, we were hit with this pandemic and no one knew what was happening. And so we had to do some bizarre things like shut people down and shut down stores and, you know, we had lockdowns and it was so weird, but it's been 18 months. And I'm standing here right now and I'm telling you guys, I will never support another lockdown. I also will not support anyone's mandates. Listen, I have two daughters, they're in school. I have to send my children to school with a mask every single day and I shared this last week at another event that we had. I never stopped working because I'm a worker, right? And my husband's a worker. So when the world shut down, I had to continue working and so my children had to be placed in daycare. And so we went to daycare with no masks in the middle of the pandemic. And then after, we went to summer camp with no masks. Then we went to school and we had a mask. Then we go back to summer camp, no masks for the entire summer, and then all of a sudden we're back at school with masks again. And I'm sorry, but I'm angry. And I'm a mom and I'm also in this position where I have to work for you, right? And so there's some things that I may not like, but I'm angry just as much... And so there's some things that I may not like, but I'm angry just as much as you guys are, because I don't want to send my two little girls to school with a mask every single day. It's awful. However, I feel as though our hands are tied, because literally, we can't do anything. Us as being put in this situation as parish council people, we have no power whatsoever. I get calls and emails all the time, please do something about the mandates, please stop it. We literally have no, we can't, if Mr. Dove was here, we can't do anything. The only person that the governor reports to is the president, and we all know how he feels about the mask. So I'm with you, I'm there, I will not support a mandate, and I agree. Don't come to my house and tell me how to raise my kids, because I'm not going to go to your house and tell you how to raise your kids, right? But I'm just as frustrated as you guys are, and so when you see me up there, know that I'm with you, and I'll take your calls, I'll sit with you, but we're all, we're in it together, for sure, and we will get to the end of this, so thanks.
Thank y'all very much. You know, sitting here and looking out over all of y'all, and just thinking about what I fight the challenges for up at the Capitol for y'all, I work very hard to do that, I want y'all to know. Two weeks ago, I was on a phone call with the senators to LDH, the president of LDH, who's got, you know, all of these major, you know, all the, all the degrees and everything he has. I'm a high school educated, two weeks of college, and quit. But I got common sense. So I'm on the phone, listening to other senators ask questions, waiting on my turn, and finally I couldn't take it anymore, I had to butt in. And I asked him, I said, so all of this I'm listening to, to you preach, you're telling me there's no early treatment for COVID? He said, absolutely not, there's no approved treatment. I said, well, the vaccine's not approved. So trying to keep my cool, I went on to talk about hydroxychloroquine and ibumectin. He says it don't work. I said, I had COVID, I took the ibumectin, in two days I was better, so tell me it don't There's 22 members of my immediate family, 10 of us have COVID, and 10 of us got well, nobody even come close to going into hospital. There is early treatment, whether they like it or not. So as the phone call went on, I finally said, I guess y'all just want to kill people. And it ended abruptly. So anyway, I called another senator that was on the call, knowing he's the, you know, the head of the LDH in that department, and I asked him, I said, what was said after I got off the call? You're a rude senator. I said, maybe I'd better to be rude with common sense than anything else. So let's talk about hydroxychloroquine for just a minute. Last year, in the early stages, I did a lot of research. So I was hearing how good hydroxychloroquine worked in the rest of the world. So I passed a resolution last year, we have probably 100,000-plus Medicaid patients in Louisiana that take hydroxychloroquine on a regular basis for rheumatoid arthritis and many other ailments. So I had two questions I wanted them to do, I passed a resolution, just call these people, and they got two questions. Since you're taking hydroxychloroquine, did you catch COVID? And if you did, how bad was it? That would've gave us 100,000 people to know whether it helped or not. And guess what? They said they couldn't do it. So they didn't want to know, and I'll tell you all that in just a minute. So this year, I passed the same resolution, I enforced it a lot stronger, and I get a letter back from the president of LDH, and basically it says, look, we're not going to do this thing again because it's a wasted time, because once we give people hydroxychloroquine in a hospital, they die anyway. Well, I guess so, it's too late. That's the whole point, it's a early treatment. So I get very passionate about this, because we're letting people die for no reason, and I'm fed up with it. And you know why they don't want to do the study? Because if we prove that something else works, you don't need a vaccine. They're paying our college students $100 apiece to take the vaccine. If you gotta pay somebody to take something, something's got to be wrong. So I'm gonna end with this, because I know y'all got a lot of questions to ask. All's I'm telling you, I'm fed up with y'all, let's go and fight the battle. Thank y'all.
So if anybody has any questions or any comments, you can come on up now to the mic right here. Good. Yes, sir, if you please give your name.
My name is Peter Marlborough, I live at 1120 Acadian Drive. I've had this damn thing three times, twice in 2019, once this year. Guess how I cured? Vitamin C, vitamin D, sunshine, zinc, magnesium, vitamin E, all simple things that we should be taking every day. This is nothing, this is fluke, this is not COVID-19, this is BS, it's communism 101. And I want to know what I can do to start a protest and go to Baton Rouge? What are the legal things that I need to do? And I asked Mr. Tim Sonja to please pass me a message or something, to let me know what I can do legally.
All right, I believe there's a mic over there, Sheriff Tim, he had a question for you, what he could do legally to start a protest to go to Baton Rouge?
Well, just call your First Amendment.
That's all I need.
That's all you need, you might have requirements of wherever you protest, some city permit or whatever, but it's.
Well, that's kind of what I'm asking, about permits and what have you.
Well, it'd be, it'd depend on Baton Rouge, if you wanted to protest there, if it requires a permit or whatever, but it's your First Amendment, and they'd usually have to approve a permit.
Okay. What about here in Terrebonne Parish?
I think if you do it on the public sidewalks and all, you don't need a permit, if you do it like in the courthouse square in that little area, you need a permit, but if you stay on the sidewalks, you don't.
As long as you're on the sidewalk.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Where normal people can usually walk.
Yeah.
It's your right to do cartwheels there if you want.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to be sure of the legality.
No, if you're gonna do a protest on a road, like if you want to walk on a major road, you can do that, it requires a permit, and the reason why is for us, so we can make sure we can block roads so you can do it.
Right.
But if it's just like on the sidewalk, if it's on the sidewalk, or you're good. Anywhere where you can normally walk, you're good.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Peter, I appreciate you being here, and at the beginning of your comments, and since we have some legislators here, I want to actually ask you guys this question, but you talked about some vitamins you were taking, and you were taking care of your body, and it sounds like you really are invested in like having a healthy lifestyle, but why aren't we, as a state, doing more investments on preventative or healthy lifestyles, or you know, healthy living, rather than let's give everybody a vaccine? I mean, that's what I want to see, is let's invest more energy and time in making our bodies healthy than, you know, having to do this vaccine, or having to kind of, let's be more proactive, and that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, is that coming?
Basically, we've been pushing that at the state level, I have for sure, but they keep, you know, keep falling back to this vaccine's the best thing since sliced bread, which we know better. But the thing about it is, is my brother caught COVID, he's 10 years older than me in Texas, he went to urgent care there, and they gave exactly what y'all just said, gave him ibumectin, zinc, vitamins, all the different vitamins, and then told him to take the ibumectin once a week for 10 weeks after, just in case. So the other states are waking up, we just got to get Louisiana to wake up, and we're trying hard to do that.
Sure, I just wanted to add to the answer to Jessica's question, the short of it is LDH. A little bit longer is this, what we have in this country, and it seems especially in Louisiana right now, is not a healthcare system, we have a sick care system, because they don't seem to be interested in helping us to promote health. Last year, in a joint House Health and Welfare and House Education Committee meeting, when we met because we wanted to have an open public discussion about what the requirements were going to be for students to meet for sports events, I was able to question an LDH official, and what I asked him was, we have so many people in our nursing homes who are dying from COVID, has anybody thought to check their vitamin D levels and to raise them when they're not high enough? And you can go back and find the video, but his answer basically told that he looked at me like I just landed from outer space. So we don't have a healthcare system, if you want to protect your health, you're kind of on your own right now.
So currently, most of the pharmacies are actually stocking it. The State Board of Pharmacy, I heard this week from multiple pharmacies, sent a letter out telling them not to fill these prescriptions for COVID. Most of the pharmacists are on board, and they see the data, and they know it's helping. So just beware, I don't know if they're going to permanently ban it from the state or what's going on. Most CVS, Walgreens, they're stocking it, it's taking them a little longer to get it right now, but you can get it if your physician will write a prescription for it. I'm handing out prescriptions to everyone who comes through, and they are getting them filled, it takes a day or two.
All right. I would like to be able to link up or contact, is there any way that, and the purpose of this thing is to begin to unify and have a voice and speak? We need to know how to get in touch with one another.
Stand up at that mic and tell you that answer.
Okay, my name's Marina Bizzillato, last Friday, we actually started an organization, we had an organizational meeting called We the People. And we right now have a Facebook page, we're looking to have a website built, it's difficult to communicate, so we're using Facebook right now, and actually, you have to be approved to come on, because we want to make sure that we're like-minded people. But we plan to start having rallies, we want to make signs for yards, we want to do whatever you want to do, we need to come together and solve this problem. Our Facebook page has a picture of a shark, and the shark is the predator in the ocean. But you know what's eating the shark? All the little fish that it would normally eat. So our constitution secures the inalienable rights that Mr. Claston talked about, it secures them, but we still have to stand strong for them. It doesn't mean that it totally protects us from it, but it just secures them, and that's written in the constitution, so we have to come together as a community to fight this. So that's We the People. On Facebook, I can, we have a committee here, a team, maybe we can wait at the door, and if you want to be added to that Facebook page, and that's just the start, it just started last Friday night, and in fact, this right here is a spinoff from it, so we're happening, and we're happening fast.
Can you ask a question, where you can get it? Wolf's Pharmacy carries it right now, that I know of. I don't believe that the State Board of Pharmacy has the right to restrict its use, because it's FDA-approved.
Yeah, and your mom and pop pharmacies are more likely to give it to you than the big corporations, because they're generally controlled by somebody out of state, as opposed to your mom and pop pharmacies.
So if we start what we can agree on, I think we all in this room and around want to reduce hospitalizations and death due to COVID, we all agree on that, right? We all have the best intentions, let's give it that, I believe it. We can also agree that as individuals, vaccinated or not, we all respond individually to diseases and treatments differently. Tylenol might work for you, it doesn't work for me, right? So, okay, that's one thing. I might need some of the health experts in here, is it about 20 to 30% more or less of COVID hospitalizations, vaccinated or not, people with a BMI of greater than 30? Any idea what that number may be? Is that a safe bet, conservative number? 25 to 30% of hospital beds occupied with COVID, vaccinated or not, it's okay, 30%, let's just go with that number, okay? All right, BMI, Body Mass Index, it's considered 25 to 29 is considered overweight, 30 and above is considered obese. Statistically, these patients have and suffer generally more diabetes, high blood pressure, stroke, other complications, COVID complications, it's a problem, all right? You alluded to improving healthcare, advocating healthcare, I mean, nutrition and diet exercise. Every doctor, from the toenail doctor to the neurologist, says quit smoking, exercise, lose weight, all right? They all say that, right? Okay. I'm a dentist, I say it too, all right? So, all right, so let's agree, vaccinated versus unvaccinated, people both get the infection and can spread it, we agree on that, I believe. Think we agree on that. Vaccinated and unvaccinated people can have symptoms that raise from mild to severe. We agree on that, very good. So the goal of the vaccine is to reduce the number of hospitalizations, that is the current goal. Okay, we agree on that, I think we all want that. But if we follow the example, back to my story, back, if we follow the example in the lead of hospitals, some businesses around town, some government agencies, some cities, and we apply the same actions, if you even want to close your eyes for a second, just close your eyes, and let's apply this to BMI, okay? Sensitive subject, I know, but wait, okay? What if, close your eyes, what if we only hire people that their BMI is less than 30? I mean, that's, you know, it's affecting the number of beds. What if we offer a special sick leave only for people whose BMI is less than 30 and not for others? What if we're very generous, and we give you nine months to lower your BMI to less than 30, or you're getting fired? Huh? Unless you have a gland issue and you can't lose weight, it's a choice, huh? If that's what we're going with, it's a choice, all right? What if we do this one, like some local hospitals, I won't say names, being nice, I need redemption, so does everybody else. What if you wear a yellow dot on your ID badge at some hospitals, and it says, you know what, in case you can't tell, my BMI is greater than 30, maybe we can embarrass you to get into doing something, right? Maybe you can take the Dextrotrim or something. Let's go into the, okay, you cannot go into the restaurant unless you have your card that says your BMI is less than 30, because God knows, in South Louisiana, we have great food, it's not going to help your BMI go down, okay? So that's got to happen, all right? Now, here's a good one, I know many friends with this one, you can't go to college unless your BMI is less than what? 30! Oh, hallelujah, all right. Now, here's our goal, listen to this, guys, this is very noble, I'm being very sincere. We're going to have less COVID complications now, and when you get the Zulu and the Echo and all these variants, guess what? Everyone's BMI is lower, you got less hospitalization, less beds used, and taboo. According with my other doctors, you're going to have less high blood pressure problems, less heart disease, you're going to have beds open like crazy, because why? Not only is it not COVID there as much, your heart attack, your stroke, you have hypertension, diabetics, they're not going to be taking those beds, are they? Well, this is a very noble thing, but as I rack my brain, my poor wife has heard me talk about this for 10 hours, more like 10 days. What, what is the problem I come back to? It's a big word, starts with a D, it ain't Dallas, what's the word? Ah, okay, that's the big problem. And as my friend alluded to earlier, we have life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. If my friends, many of which I have, have a BMI greater than 30, and they don't want to take a Dextrotrim, although it's better for the population, guess what? I'm not going to let them do the Dextrotrim, I don't care, I might take it, my secret, but, but, does that make sense, right? So it's just important, so for these people, we got, imagine if we did that at my office, if I applied this to my office, my staff would kill me, number one, but if we did that, and I'm done here, the lawyers would come out the woodwork with a great lawsuit. Where are these lawyers from my friends, my dear friends who've lost their jobs?
So CDC says that smoking leads to 500,000, I mean, half a million deaths a year due to premature deaths because of smoking, and also 16 million people live with serious illnesses because of their smoking habits. Is anyone up on the board that's going to offer free leave to people that are getting this vaccine, are they also going to be offering free leave to people that are not smokers, do things to help their, you know, their medical rates? Because it also leads, I think, $325 billion. Because it also leads, I think, $325 billion a year in medical treatments. All CDC's own numbers. Is anyone up on the board going to offer their people paid time off because they're not smokers?
I can answer it. Actually, when I took office, there was no sick leave. It was just leave. I put sick leave for all of my people. They never had it, so I put it. But also, there are some challenges. I have over 300-something officers in my department. And right now, well, I found a couple loopholes with the policy. Now, I have full-time, I paid short-term for all my people. There's 100, they get paid 100% for up to three months if they're out past 10 days. So, I got crucified, but I found a loophole in the policy so I can keep my people paid. And that's what I'm doing. This is about my police officer, do that job every day. And that's what it's about. I just found a loophole in insurance that allowed me to do it. So, this is why I had to put a policy. Boy, I got crucified. But at the end of the day, once they use 10 days, then they still getting paid 100% up to three months after the 10 days. But they not gonna get no gaps, they're not gonna miss a paycheck. And that's what's important. I want to be able to take care of their families. Our guys, but look, I'm angry about everything that's going on. Look, I was a Marine for 22 years. And if I find out if a country put this out on purpose, I will gladly put my Marine Corps uniform back on and go deal with them. But, you know, I'm seeing a lot of numbers, but the most important thing, I'm trying to keep my people healthy. It's not gonna work if I call, "Well, I'm sorry, I have nobody to send, they all have COVID." You know, I have a lot of challenges, everybody said, "I don't want to be in your seat right now." The only thing I'm trying to do is make sure my people are taken care of. And right now, it's not easy, but I'm doing the best I can. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I pray every night for God to give me the right answers to help our people. And I will continue doing that.
I would like to add something to that, is if a company requires a vaccine and the person ends up with major complications, I think that company ought to be responsible.
Sheriff, I wanted to ask something, because you guys have more power than the governor take. Do you have to enforce any of his unconstitutional mask mandates?
Well, I said it, I think I said that during a council meeting when I first took office, I will not be the mask police. And I've been, you know, first of all, look, this is two things that I'll let people understand. If a store clerk or store owner, and that's their policy in the store, and they ask them to leave, they refuse to leave, and they call us, "We gotta go there," because they don't want them in the business. That's just respecting their wishes of the store owner or management or whatever. So, we there not to enforce the mask, they just don't want you there. And if they don't want you there because you're not playing by the rules which they set in place, I mean, the worst thing you get charged is trespassing or interremaining after forbidden. But most of the times, like, look, they don't want you there, you leave. We just try to keep the peace there. But I'm not having my police officers run around looking and writing tickets for masks. I'm not doing it. I said that from the beginning, I refuse to be the mask police, but I can speak for 64 other, well, 63 other sheriffs, they none of us are mask police.
One other question. In the school district, what power do you have?
In the school district?
Yes.
Well, I have SROs in the school, but I mean, if they're breaking laws, my SROs can take action as far as lawbreakers in the school. But I mean, you still have policies within schools and things like that, but my officers are not there to enforce any policy. As a school, more or less, just trying to keep the peace and deal with if a crime is committed in the school.
The reason I'm asking that is, the parents need to be protected from the governor or the governor's mandate.
Well, I mean, I can't, I'm not gonna, I mean, we're not gonna send officers in there demanding everybody wear a mask.
No, no, not to wear it, because the mask mandate, I'm asking, do you, you should have more.
A mandate is not a law.
Yes. So, why is it?
Okay? And that's the truth.
Okay.
A mandate is not a law. And if it's not in Title 14, Title 32, that's the only thing I'm bound by to enforce those laws.
Okay.
Unless legislation passed something, then I'd be bound to enforce the law. But it ain't gonna happen. And it hasn't happened.
So, can they force parents or students to wear a mask? Because that would be, that would be breaking the law.
Well, my officers won't.
Okay. No, not their officers, but the school. Can they force? Because then they are violating the right of those children.
Well, that would open up, I think, a Pandora's box for any school if they try to push that too hard.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's what's gonna happen.
That's what I wanted to know.
I mean, look, I mean, I think what everybody's looking for is a silver bullet that's to solve everything. And there isn't any. All I can tell you is, you gotta get your own information and really make your own decision. I mean, there is absolutely no silver bullet that's gonna solve this COVID issue. And there's, you know, is this gonna be the new norm? We don't know. I mean, it's, you know, whatever it's gonna be. But the fact is, all we can do is the best we can and make your own decision on what you want to do and educate yourself. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. Like I said, there's no silver bullet to anything. There's absolutely not. There's not a 100% of, do I take the vaccine or I don't take it? Do I do this? Do I do that? Do I do this? There's not 100% or anything. All we do is make the best decisions. Now, my brother, he's a doctor, he's a cancer doctor, and he told me flat out, he said, zinc's good, vitamin D's good, take a lot of vitamins. Regardless whether you vaccinate or not, he said it does boost immune system and keeps you healthy. Because, I mean, there's nothing 100% right now. Nothing. You had another question?
No. I just want to kind of piggyback off what you said, and I appreciate the position that you're in, Sheriff, because I know that you had to make some tough decisions. And I know that your officers are number one, and you're there to protect them. And I do think that more companies should look at some family medical leave, or we need to look at some policies that we can put in place so that a parent doesn't have to choose whether they go to work or they stay home with their child. And then to answer the question about the schools, once again, we are powerless here, but I want to remind you guys, elections have consequences. And as you can see from what just happened at that VESI board meeting, when you didn't have one elected representative stand up to that angry crowd of people, they couldn't even face them. If you're gonna come to me and yell at me, well, then I'm gonna stand up and we're gonna have a conversation. Because you put me in this position for a reason. However, these people are elected, so we need to remember when we are electing people that we're gonna have someone who's gonna stand up to the governor, like I know Ms. Farrell does all the time, that we're gonna have somebody who's gonna stand up to an angry crowd of parents and explain to them why or why not we can't do this. Because to just blanketly say, "This is the policy and this is how it has to be forever," no, don't tell me that. There's gotta be another way. But nobody's telling us that. Nobody's telling us that. And so, when we vote, we need to make sure that we've got people with a backbone who are gonna stand up to the governor or are gonna stand up to the president and say, "No, I'm not gonna have that." So, remember that whenever we've got some elections coming up, that we need good, strong people. Thank you.
Yes, you had a follow-up?
Did I answer your question?
Yes. Stay close to the mic.
I know that took longer than two minutes, but I just want to piggyback on other things. Because we are worried about the big D-word. Can we stop the divisive rhetoric? Can we, instead of calling out and saying vaccinated, get 10 extra days of paid leave, can we instead say, "Anyone that is on the force that has to deal with this can also get 10 days." And I appreciate your passion, everyone's passion. We have to be uncomfortable in these uncomfortable times, but I think we just need to stop the division. And if we could, we could maybe just blanket it across the board, any officer that deals with COVID can get 10 days.
Well, the policy allowed me to use the insurance to cover their, instead of general funds. So, when it came to that, that's a policy. But I'll tell you right now, I'm not punishing any of my people that get sick. And if they need time and vacation, they will get their vacation. And I'm telling you that. But the policy states what I have to do is because I can get insurance to pay them when they're down, because I have another 18 filling the void and I'm paying time and a half there. I have a budget and I have to continue. The most important thing is I want to keep my officers. I hired 50 more officers since I've taken office. And I've put more officers out there. And I want to provide more officers out there. But the fact is, I mean, look, I'm just trying to keep them healthy as best I can.
Are we discriminating in the new employee screen?
No.
All right. And just to remind you, the best way to stop divisiveness starts with you. You get to decide whether you're gonna be divisive or not. All right? Next, if you would give your name, please.
I'm Holly A. Bear. This is the sheriff. I'm not afraid of COVID even a little, but I'm afraid of our federal government. And you are the last line of defense between us and them. So, will you give your word that you're gonna protect our God-given rights?
That's what I took an oath to do.
You heard it.
People ask me.
They come in with those passports and all that kind of stuff. I mean, they come in, they're trying to do that.
Well, the beautiful part about the sheriff, if federal government want to come in, I can shut them down at the parish line. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I have to make the best decision to protect my people in the parish. And I think I made that pretty clear when I ran for office. Look, when you raise your hand and support and defend the Constitution, you don't pick and choose what part you want to support or defend. Come on. I mean, it's pretty simple. Now, do I have tough decisions to make to keep my people safe? Could be, you know what, that's something that I have to do. But I can tell you this, and when it came to vaccines, when I was in military service, I felt like a pincushion. I stood in line and I was in, I went to South America and I was telling somebody the other day, they gave me, they gave me a syringe and it had some stuff look like STP motor roll treatment. And it had, and it looked like, it looked like basically a 16-penny nail and I don't, he said, "Well, it needs..." And I had a golf ball-sized lump in my butt for about a month. But he said it's protecting me from something, but I have no idea, remember what it was protecting me. But I'm gonna tell you, we all stood in line and took it, and it's for the greater good. Look, when it comes to sacrifices out there, there ain't nothing free. And the people that are sacrificing, they give up their freedoms to do it for the sake of the Constitution. And, you know, sometimes, it's a tough decision. But the bottom line is, look, we all have a tough job, we all have to make some choices. But just make the best choice, would you feel you need to take? But the most important thing, look, people's rights is why I swore an oath. And I continue to do that, and I will.
Very good, thank you. If you please give your name.
My name is Amber Berry. I'm a nurse practitioner. I spoke last week at the meeting that we had to kind of get some organization and some stuff going. And after I spoke, the first thing I said was, "You can be for the shots and against mandates." So, I believe in your choice of taking that vaccine, if you feel like that is what's best for you. I also believe if you want to wear a mask and feel like you're protecting yourself, then you are free to do that. But if you believe that a piece of cloth over your face is preventing you from spreading illness or keeping you from getting it, you're sadly misinformed. So, above all else, even if we can't get things to change right now with King John Edwards up there, we do need to figure out a way to protect our community, and we need to figure out a way to preserve our rights. And right now, because I spoke last week, and I never said if someone should or shouldn't take the vaccine, because I feel like you need informed consent, and you need to be able to make that decision based on what you and your healthcare provider decide is best for you. I also talked about what Peter, I was gonna say something about this, I have the numbers from the LDH website. I got them and I quoted them, they update them every two weeks. You have to go digging, because all they want you to know is how many unvaccinated and vaccinated people there are in the hospital. But what you don't know is over the last two weeks, if you click on death information related to COVID-19, 95% of the people that died with COVID had an underlying condition. 60% of them had hypertension, 37% of them had diabetes, 21% were obese, 15% had heart disease, yes, I memorized it. So, we do have a really big problem of not talking about underlying conditions that are leading to hospitalizations and death, whether you're vaccinated or not. We're not talking about the fact that you can get your vitamin D levels up, you can exercise, you can lose weight, and that will help. But whether you're vaccinated or not does not determine how well you do when you get this. How you take care of yourself makes a huge difference. And then the one thing they are not speaking about, period, across the board, is people that have already gotten COVID and have natural immunity. There is not a number on that LDH website, a ticker on there, that shows that people that have already contracted it, and don't mistake what I'm saying for me saying that everybody should have to get COVID. I'm not saying that. I'm saying there is a large percentage of people that have active natural immunity, and that's what the vaccines are based on, is our own natural, God-given immunity. So, that needs to be recognized. And I have someone actively coming after me for speaking at that meeting, saying she's gonna strip my nurse practitioner license, because I dared to speak at that meeting last week. So, I can tell you, the reason we don't have any medical people standing up right now is number one, their jobs are being threatened if they don't get vaccinated, even though they've been working for 18 months in COVID units. Their jobs are being threatened if they don't get vaccinated, even if they've already had it, and they are concerned about the long-term consequences. We're forcing this on our children. The diocese where my kids go to school is not accepting medical exemptions for masks. So, what's gonna happen when they mandate vaccines for our children 12 and up, when we don't know what's gonna happen to them down the road, and we know it causes cardiac inflammation? We need to protect our community before we go storming the Capitol. We need people to stand up. We need to get braver. We need to be bolder. We need to start standing up for our right to choose. And that's all I want to say.
If you would give your name, please, Sheriff.
There's no need, she touched on everything's cool.
All right, good.
Okay, it's Marina again. And in keeping what Amber just said about the medical community not speaking out because they're worried about their jobs, several medical people, professionals, have written letters. And I'm gonna read a couple of them to you right now, because they're afraid to say this in person. What kind of country are we living in that this is happening? I am writing to you as a member of our healthcare community. I am a clinic nurse employed by one of our local hospitals. What I have witnessed in the last year and a half goes against everything we were taught in nursing school, and more importantly, against my moral fiber. I am witnessing physicians push dangerous injections. I will not refer to it as a vaccine, since it isn't, on every patient, no matter their medical history, no matter their age. I am witnessing severe side effects from these injections, including death. Our medical professionals are turning a blind eye, and these adverse reactions are not being reported, are even acknowledged as a possible adverse event. I have seen blood clots develop in their lungs, as well as deep vein thrombosis in their extremities. I've seen heart inflammation, tremors, altered mental status, fevers of unknown origin, low platelet counts, spinal lesions, enlarged lymph nodes and lymphoma developed after these injections. Not to mention, I get calls daily from our vaccinated patients telling me that they're sick and have tested positive for COVID. What exactly is the purpose of an injection that neither prevents or stops the threat, the spread of the infection? That's a very legitimate question. I've watched our immune-compromised patients present to the ER with fever, difficulty breathing, pneumonia, plus PCR tests be turned away without any treatment. I recently observed a 15, 57-year-old woman become sick the very next day after her Pfizer injection. I'm gonna put this in, I hear Pfizer's gonna be approved tomorrow by the FDA. "She was sent home from the ER and then returned two weeks later. She was full of blood clots in her legs and lungs. She was then admitted and told she had COVID. She was given the IV medication, Remdesivir, I don't know, Remdesivir, thank you, for 10 days consecutively, even though her condition continued to worsen with each dose. Her lungs filled with fluid. As she was alone and expressing fear in the ICU, she was in the hospital four days before they even felt it appropriate to give her albuterol breathing treatments. After her 12th day in the hospital, she was found unresponsive. They were unable to intubate her, because she had so much internal bleeding by the time that she was pronounced dead. Her death was listed as being caused by deep vein thrombosis, pulmonary embolism, and COVID. No mention that she had received her Pfizer injection just weeks prior. I was told, it was told to me by one local physician that they knew Remdesivir does not work for respiratory infections, however, they continued to use it. This is the same drug that was used unsuccessfully for Ebola and is known to cause kidney failure, liver dysfunction, and fluid overload. Once you're filled with the fluid from Indis... Sorry, thank you. Um, then you are put on a vent and maybe even have chest tubes placed in you. If you're lucky, you survive. We need to get the government out of our hospital systems, or we are in trouble. We cannot let our children grow up in this society. We need to take our community back and help people understand what's occurring before it's too late. May God bless and protect us all. Signed, anonymously-concerned citizen." Let me say, because of our meeting last week, I've gotten a lot of these from people in the medical profession that are too scared to stand up. People are dying, they're seeing it, they're seeing the misuse of medications, they're seeing that they're not giving the information that Chad gave to us. You wanna know if it's a plan, Sheriff? It's a plan. This is obvious. I mean, if we're being withheld medications and given medications that aren't working, and they're killing us, there's something to this. Listen to the medical workers.
We'll learn in this process as we go. Class action suits avail much. There is Informed Consent Action Network. What I want to put in the mix here is hope. I feel complacency, God is here. My parents, us, the older ones, we let it all slide. That ends, here and now. I think every single person here, you took the time, you took the initiative. What we're starving from is truth. I know I've been kicked off of several social media platforms. I'm a digger. Winona Day, Whitney, can tell you, I'm a digger. I don't stop. But it goes hand in hand with what the word tells us. The affected fervent prayer avails much. You don't stop. You don't stop till you get to the truth. And, I too, have someone very dear to me that is facing termination from his employment this week coming, because he refuses the jabberduh. Okay. It was scary that first day, but he didn't give in. He did not give ground. Sheriff, we are at war. There is enough evidence to know that it's not just the foreign enemies, we have domestic enemies, okay? This'll all get sorted out, but for the immediate, I want everyone here today to give themselves a pat on the back. We're all given special gifts. As a digger, I think what Marina and the others have done, forming this Facebook page, is a big start. What we gotta learn, as you're censored on social media, is to use catchphrases. You can't call it "COVID", I call it "Rona-dona", or something. You gotta learn how to put it where your post can be seen, so you can get the word out. "Ivermectin", I put the horse, and then "Mectin", okay? Yes, you can find ivermectin, the paste, it is at Tractor Supply, but you gotta tell the person that you got a big ol' horse in your yard, and it's got the worms. Okay, that's how you do it. We gotta play this game a little longer, till the big guys, the big guns, or let's put it this way, the ones with the biggest guns can come and- Get 'em out of our nation, we can live in peace. Take the masks, face diapers, that's another thing, don't say it's masks, face diapers off these babies, and send them to school. Yes, my seven-year-old grandbaby, she's got a rash from here to here, with a silly... They've only been in school for a week. What the heck? But yes, I do believe that if we keep trudging on, we have purpose. This is why we were put here, in this time and space, to do God's work, and we're doing it. Let's keep it up.
I would like to say something on that. I have 12 grandchildren, and many of them in school. You can find a doctor that will give you any kind of medical excuse you need to say they don't have to wear a mask. So, go find a doctor that'll write you that excuse, and you can stop all the infections on the children's face.
Sorry, there's one problem with that. The individual school principals have a right whether to accept that or not. So, if they have been issued, but some in the community have been denied by the principal.
Maybe you need to find the right principal.
We don't have that, we don't have that option.
Well, you know, you do have the option of who you put on the local school board. You do have the option of who you put on the Bessie Board to represent you. And it may look like you're powerless, but your vote is very powerful. Yes, ma'am, if you give your name, please. Again?
Oh, I'm sorry, somebody else don't speak? Yeah, Kathy?
Uh, I just wanted to say that Jessica has just said some amazing things. You're very fortunate that she's on your council. But you're not powerless. Your school board needs to see you, and they need to hear you. Because the elections are not until next year. But you could have, you could make a difference with the ones who are there. As far as getting a doctor, I know what you're saying, but if you continue to push back, push back, push back, we're doing things, have things in the process that we're trying to do to stop this mask. And you also need to be calling, continually calling your school board members, continually calling your Bessie members, and telling them how very disappointed you are that they would not allow the people that traveled all through the state to even give testimony. I mean, all of you, whether they're your Bessie member or not, you need to get a list, and you need to, just call, call, call. It makes a difference. I'm telling you, it makes a difference. And I just wanted to say for the people that are maybe being threatened to lose their jobs, we do, my office, and I'm sure all of our offices, there are exemptions that you can get in the workplace that will make a difference. And so, if you find those, I think the frontline doctors have exemption forms that you could, that you could complete, and your employer will likely accept those, especially in the healthcare industry. There are 266 people that we know of, that are associated with the leg, that are ready to walk out. I hope you don't think they're gonna allow that. With already a shortage and all of the emergency we have with COVID, it's not gonna happen. You have to be aware that they are bullying, they are coercing, and they think they can get you to do what they want you to do. Stand. You have to stand.
Yeah, go ahead.
As Amber had said earlier as well, the diocese will not accept the letter. So, we're Catholic school parents, however, we have to send the children to school. And that's something that I've struggled with personally, because, on one hand, I don't want my children to have to go. I don't want them to have to wear a mask every day. But on the other hand, they deserve an education. And I worry about their future, and I worry about them falling behind if I don't give them that education. So what do we do? Do we pull them, do we not? I mean, that's something that we all struggle with on a daily basis, but just, the diocese won't accept the letter. And so, once again, powerless, absolutely we're powerless, because we have to, our children have to have an education. I work at one of the best clinics here in Terrebonne Parish. I could get a letter any day from anyone, however, they won't accept it. They won't accept it.
Jessica, you're not powerless. Homeschooling works. There's a large homeschooling group around here. The other thing for me, Sheriff, I'm gonna put this to you again. Can you not arrest a principal for child abuse if they're forcing old children against their wife?
Well, if, we can investigate any, we've investigated teachers, we've investigated any crimes that occur in a school.
But can you not arrest them for doing that? Because it is unconstitutional.
Well, if it's considered child abuse, and that'd be the way the law interprets it.
Okay, the rash in their face, and the breathing?
I mean, if, 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 let's say a child was, I mean, I'm looking at the law. Let's say a child was, had a rash, and the doctor said, "Nope, shouldn't be wearing one." And a teacher or a principal makes it, and that could be problematic, and there'd probably be some level of, you know, there could be some level at that point. But I mean, would have to, you know, you'd have to have some level of backing to say, "Okay, what constitutes that?"
We need to get behind our sheriff, because we need to understand the power, the constitutional power that they have. You have, they have a lot more power than you think. And these guys need to be supported in this time and in this moment. I wanna, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with the Tuskegee Experiment. We need to understand, like I said, first of all, this whole common good is dictatorial or tyrant's language. They use that as a common good. There's no common good beyond the individual. See, we don't have a common group identity, we are not all the same. So, the issue with the Tuskegee Experiment, doctors were instructed not to treat patients-
That's right.
-that were injected-
That's what's happening.
-with syphilis. They were instructed, "Understand how far the government will go, or those with vested interests will go to deny you your rights." Understand that. I'm not saying they're doing it, but it's a possibility, because it has been done before.
But can I just say, I'm sorry, class, were you finished? I just wanted to say, I know there are lots of people that have kids in here, in the Catholic diocese, at those schools. How many of you have kids in Catholic schools? Okay, there was a, I don't know which school it was, in Baton Rouge, but they said that, you know, they mandated that the children would have to have a mask. Within a day and a half, they had enough, have y'all heard of that? They had enough signatures on a petition, and you know what? They backed down. So, I'm just saying, I'm not saying, you know, you may not want to do it here, but it's been done, and it's a possibility to do that.
One other thing, we fought the war for independence to protect our rights. Not the government, but our individual rights to life, liberty, and our property. Have we forgotten that?
I'm Mona Escobar. I had asthma, I have diabetes, and I am a recent cancer survivor. And I am the prime example of who should get the vaccine, because I'm at high risk. I did not get the vaccine, and in April, I had COVID. I didn't even know I had COVID. I take vitamin D that Dr. Alavizion put me on, long before I had cancer. And, um, I was told when I went for my chemo class, before you start chemo, 3,000 milligrams of vitamin C a day. Emergency, three packs of that. And I have been on that ever since, with Zant. I got COVID in April, and my antibodies, as of last week, are still high. I was sick, um, as far as, thought I had a sinus infection, never ran fever. And I was achy, literally on the sofa for maybe a day. I was out of work because of Easter break, so I wasn't around people. So, but it didn't even last a week. I wasn't sick. And, um, I think our bodies, if given the right stuff, have the ability to heal themselves. Past pandemics did not have vaccines with them. Past pandemics, we survived through adaptive immunity. And they don't want us to know about adaptive immunity, and maybe Dr. Alavizion can give us an education on us having the antibodies and not needing the vaccine.
So there's actually data that they've had, there's a paper published in December that they actually looked at the cells that produce the antibodies, and this was eight months after people had been infected, and they have the same immune response that you get from any other disease out there. The paper was known, and there was, I know I saw someplace that they suggested there might be longer immunity than three months, because this, you know, they originally came out and said, "At three months, there's no more immunity, so you have to have the vaccine." That made no sense. There was no, there's no science sense behind that. They published the paper in May. Has anyone seen it? It's not in the news. That basically proves that you have long-term immunity from this. It's the same, the same cells that make the antibodies to everything else are there. They were doing bone marrow aspirates on people. So, once you've had it, there really is not a reason to need the vaccine. I mean, you have immunity to it. Now, there may be other versions that come out that that immunity doesn't cover you as well for. But that also shows that people getting multiple rounds of this are not the ones ending up in the hospital. You know, nobody expected, that knows anything about immunology, that the vaccine would stop you from getting the disease. I mean, when they said, "That's it, it's a one-and-done, you just get the vaccine and you're good", vaccines don't work that way. They allow your system to fight it. So it was no shocker when people started coming down with it again. And it's not a surprise that if you've had the vaccine, those people are still spreading it everywhere. Which also goes back to the mask mandates, that if you've had the vaccine in a lot of the companies now, you don't need to wear a mask. But if you haven't, you have to. That makes no medical sense. If you're trying to stop this, either everyone should have it, or no one should. It doesn't really make much difference. So they need to get back to basic science, and the decisions made will be a lot more believable and understandable. The problem is, they've made no medical sense from the beginning. And this is where, this is why people question what's going on, and don't trust what they're hearing.
Thank you.
I'm Sherri Champagn, anywhere past that, it's Sherri Champagne. So, initially, I was at the Bessie meeting in Baton Rouge, and initially, everyone was there, just to kind of give you guys, I don't know if you've even heard about it, but we all do need your numbers. I'm also with Unmask Our Children Louisiana. We are 10,500 parents deep right now in Louisiana, so if you guys can go find us. It's all about just mandates, doing things to the children that are absolutely unconstitutional, unlawful, and all of this other good stuff that's going on in the schools. And to touch on a few of the other things, as far as the medical treatment and mistreatment of COVID patients, obviously, we have all gotten a bit of that. But, in our school systems, the one thing that I have come back to, all of the superintendents that I have called around Louisiana, they always say, "Well, our attorneys say we have to comply." All of them say this. So I ask them, usually right before they hang up on me, "Well then, why are we paying attorneys to tell us to shut our schools down, to implement policies that are absolutely, they're irrational?" And then again, I'm told, "Well, because our attorneys told us we have to do this." So, ultimately, as taxpayers, we know the superintendent of all these schools, including ours, does not pay the attorneys. We do. So, whomever the attorneys may be, on any parish and any district, those are probably a good start to find out why we are paying these attorneys, or whomever they may be. And we need someone who's gonna fight for us. We need someone who's gonna go into the school board and say, "We are illegally making children wear masks. We are illegally forcing teachers to force children to wear masks." And so, if we have these teachers that unfortunately are forcing children to do something they should not be doing, and yes, they are becoming ill. And as a retired nurse, two weeks ago, my granddaughter, she gets in my car, she's seven, teeny tiny seven, she gets in, and she is, I see her walking towards me, she is beet red, she is sweaty, and she gets in the car, she starts crying. She doesn't know what's wrong with her, she has her mask on her face, and she says she just feels yucky and she has to throw up. So, she tells me, "The air conditioner in her school was broken all day. It was 94 degrees that day. She had a heat exhaustion, ill, gets home, I of course, call my doctor, and I know exactly what I need to do, cool her down. Her body temp was 101 when I got her in the car." This is from her school. This is from her school, in class, with a mask on her face, because they told her she had to wear it. So, when I call anyone, anyone on this, in this entire district or state, and ask them, why are we doing this to kids? They tell me, they have to comply. So, it is our attorneys that are implementing this in our school districts. Livingston Parish isn't complying, because the superintendent said, well, we don't really want the funding that comes with this, so we're gonna say no, thank you. And the parents said, thank you to that. So, all of the extra funding that comes with actually saying, we're gonna mask our children, that's extra funding. If we mandate anything else, that's extra funding. So, we need to tackle that where we are now. School board members, I can tell you, Matt Ford, he is one of the only board members that I know of, that is literally against mask mandates. All the other ones are kind of on the fence. So, we can start there. Your, yes, yes, that was the other one. So, we can start there, here locally, our school boards. Please don't think that you cannot run for school board.
That's right.
You can do that. You can run for school board, every one of you can run for school board. It's your, it's your grandmother, your mother, your father, you can do that. Let's replace them first. One of the things I have to remind you all, it is in the Constitution, no one, no government has the right to supersede our decision for our children. No one, no one. There is no right that supersedes a parent's right to choose. If you choose to do with your child that you want to, you do that. And let's start standing up, let's ask questions. When I called the school board, the, one of the first times here, they told me, well, you know, we really haven't had any pushback from any parents. Now, I don't know if I believe that, I don't. But we really need to call, and we need to be a, throw it in their side, the attorneys that are telling them that this is what they want to do, we need to end that really quick, before I finish up. We do know, I've called multiple superintendents and actual hospital administrators. And as a retired nurse, I wanted to know, why are we refusing the COVID protocol that works? The COVID protocol in our hospitals, right now, if you do not follow that protocol, which is not ivermectin, it is not zinc, it is not vitamin D3 at all, you are not even allowed to mention that. So, Dr. Bobby didn't say, do this, he just said, this is what I do. He didn't say, go get that, he just said, this is what I do. So, here again, it's the protocol that we are mistreating the patients, so we need to find out why our hospitals are doing that. So, let's just get on board and make things happen, make some waves, and let these folks know that, at least right here in Tarragon Parish, we have a sheriff right there. He just said that he's not going to make anyone put on a mask to go into Target. But at the same time, we have to make sure Target knows that here, we don't want it either. So, let's do that collectively, get together, get to your meetings, start, decide who you need to run for your office and your district, and let's do that. And together, I'm sure, making a difference in the school board, everything that we do, it's our right. So, let's keep those rights, and keep anyone else from stomping on them, and we really do need to get the masks off the kids. Okay, so let's do that.
My name is Marty Shasson. About a year ago, there was a guy, parked his truck on Martin Luther King, and all he did was stand there with an American flag. Anybody remember seeing him? Well, if you don't know, that person was me. I didn't do it for attention, I didn't do it because my wife told me to. I did it because I saw one thing that people can get behind, no matter if you're white, black, blue, purple, it doesn't matter. We're all Americans.
Yes.
There's no African-Americans, there's Americans. I'm not a European-American, I'm an American. I served my career in the Marine Corps, just as the sheriff has. I know what it's like to have to do things that you don't agree with. And that's tough. I'm an Afghanistan combat veteran. Save it for the ones who didn't come home. Nobody's asking the one question, why? Why? You remember me, Ms. Nohman? You remember me talking to the council when this COVID thing stood up? It just started happening. I came and presented to the council that I didn't believe that masks worked. I had the data to prove it. I didn't believe that the virus, per se, was natural. I didn't believe that things have happened just out of the blue. I mean, what I'm trying to get at here is, why the government is really pushing a vaccine that has not been tested? Why did the vaccine, did the virus even show up in the first place? The elections, yeah. Well, I'm here to tell you something that, I'm educated. Nobody really knows this, but I was a research technician, lab technician, for Naval School, Naval Medical Research Institute, Bethesda, Maryland. I worked with NIH, I worked with Ford Dietrich and Walter Reed. I worked in infectious disease research, studying vaccines in the early 90s, just as a technician. The virus is not naturally occurring. How many people know that? Thank you, God. Sheriff, I'm gonna ask you one thing, we talked about this earlier. You have 300-plus on the force, correct? If what's coming, and I know it is, if what's coming is gonna challenge you and your men and women with the department, are you willing to open talks about reserve deputy status?
I do have a reserve program, and we are, we have signed up some of our reservers, reserve deputies. Right now, it's been a challenge, is training our guys, that's been a real delay. We've had people get sick, so we have to put things on hold, let it, let it pass, and then we get back at it, then all of a sudden, another one's sick. I mean, we run about 25, 30 cadets at a time, and when about 10 or 15% go down, then, I mean, all right, well, do we continue to go and let them pick up, or do we just kind of halt action? But the important part is, like, I gotta try to get our guys trained as quick as possible, and get them out there. Normally, about a three-and-a-half-month process. The last two academies, when it came to road officers, it's became a four-and-a-half, five-month process as a result, due to the challenges. But we do have a reserve program, and I, we sign up, but I do do a thorough background to make sure I'm not giving anybody, giving anybody that authority. And we, so we do have a background, least a reserve. I just don't give them a commission card, tell them to go out there, do good things. I want to make sure we doing the right thing for the right people.
I appreciate that. I'm gonna leave with this, you're gonna need more people, Sheriff. You're gonna need a lot more. And as a veteran, I'm sure I can speak for a lot of us, but if you ask us to stand at the parish line, we will.
Well, there is, there is, there is one thing we do have, we can reduce, in the case of a merchant, that's a posse. That's old-school stuff. But I can still produce a posse pretty quick, if I needed to.
I have a 17-year-old daughter, that is an honor student in public school. She is immunocompromised, she has an immune deficiency. But I'm not gonna let her go to school, so we asked about ingenuity. Anybody know what that is? Are they doing it anymore?
Yes.
Are they?
I don't know about here, but it's around.
They're not doing it here. You know what the option was, that we talked to the school board members for? My honor student can go out and get her GED. Think about that. That's all I got.
Thank you.
My name's Stephen Wilson, I'm from La Fouch Parish. And I got involved in this kind of on the fly, as far as the critical race theory. Went to Betsy Board meeting, committee meeting, there was no elected officials from La Fouch Parish there. Nobody was there. Nobody had anything to do it. They're dressing up the standards, they're changing the standards in social studies for the state of Louisiana. They're not even acknowledging that the Holocaust happened. They're taking everything good about the United States out of it. But I digress. Then I decided, well, I need to get involved a little bit more, I'll go to some of the school board meetings. Went to the next school board meeting, asked them why they didn't go. That's not our job, that's not what we do, that's the Betsy Board. Now, you know, y'all are all saying, hey, y'all gotta get involved. We need y'all to get involved and back us up in what we're doing. We need to see y'all at those parish council meetings, we need to see y'all at those school board meetings, we need to see y'all's participation in this as much as ours. We're here, and we want to help, but we're, we're just joke-told citizens. Yeah, we got our rights, alleged rights, because when you take that note to the school saying it's doctors saying that, you know, they shouldn't be wearing a mask, they're not gonna accept it. What does a parent have to do from there? You know, it's, it's totally out of control. Then I'm, I did a lot of research, I don't know if y'all are familiar with VAERS, everybody ought to write this down, V-A-E-R-S, Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, CDC, FDA. All right? I, I printed out a folder, it was about three inches thick, and brought it to the school board meeting. Inside that folder, it's only got the people that died from the vaccine. 5,000 and something as of a month ago, it's over 6,000 now. They started keeping records in 1990. This organization, they've had more people die from the vaccine in the last seven months than they had in the previous 31 years. And you're, we're gonna approve this vaccine? And this is on their website? This is on their website. It'll tell you the day they checked in, it'll tell you what kind of shot they got, it's gonna tell you the day they died, it's gonna tell you what symptoms they had, it's gonna tell you what medicine they were on, the whole nine yards. 31 years, previous people dying from the vaccine, we've had more die in the first seven months of this year. And that's gonna be approved for people to stick in their bodies? I don't, I don't understand, but we need y'all's help. We just can't do it alone, because this all fell on deaf ears when I got up there and talked to them, and talked to them about it. I've got one other quick thing, then I'm out of here, and this is for you, Sheriff. I'm, maybe this is the wrong quote, but it says, no employee will be allowed to attend academy without vaccination. That's all I can say.
Well, what the policy states and what I'm doing is two different things, that's so I can pay my people when they're out. And that's what's going on. This is nothing more than I had to put a policy in place, which 64, 63 other sheriffs have pretty much a consistent policy. But that's the way we can get our short term, to pick up paying our people when they're out. None of my people missed a paycheck, none of my people have been getting penalized, whether they taking a vaccination or not taking a vaccination, or if they're sick or not. And that's a fact. But I had to play the insurance game in order to get my people paid, and that's what I'm doing. Because, I mean, as far as money-wise, we didn't get a whole lot of money from the federal government when it came to dealing with this. But right now, I'm dealing with 18 people out, I'm paying 18 people while time and a half, the only thing to short term pays 100% for those 18 that are out, and I'm eating a time and a half on the other side, which is fine. But to me, during this time, it's to ensure our people are getting paid while they're out, and I'm not penalizing anybody for that.
If we decided to all show up at the next school board meeting, how many of you would be willing to step in that room with us? Okay, so we'll be organizing that and putting that out, and, you know, if we start there, even if you don't have kids in school, it doesn't matter at all, we're all citizens. My children are your children, your children are my children. So, it looks like, and everybody I've talked to says the same thing, so that'd be a good place to start, don't y'all think? All right, could you state your name, please?
My name is Tanya Petrie, I'm actually from Homa, but I live in Ascension Parish now. I'm in the medical field, I work at a hospital in the Baton Rouge area. I agree with a lot of what Dr. Alavizion, am I saying it correct? My hospital is participating and doing studies right now on, we following vaccinated patients who, how long it's taken, how far out it's taken before they're acquiring any type of immunity, as well as following people who have had COVID naturally, following their immunity. I happen to be one of those, I did have COVID, and I have natural immunity, and my values happen to be higher than a lot of the patients who have acquired the vaccine. So, I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. I don't have any children left in the public school system. I actually do have grandchildren here in Homa, that I'm very concerned about, so I'm kind of advocating for them. So, I attended the Betsy Board meeting in Baton Rouge. And my takeaway from that, there was a speaker who came earlier who attended as well, and she did a great job of surmising what occurred there. But my takeaway from that, I kept thinking to myself, I kind of felt like, the way that they handled the meeting, it was kind of a strategy on their part, to get people worked up. And unfortunately, a lot of the parents fit into it, because you're talking about, talking about our children, so we're very passionate about it. But we actually could use that to our, in our favor, I believe. But the only thing I would advise is that, you know, we could go, and we could protest about the mask, and in a couple of weeks, it's gonna be about the vaccine, and then a couple of weeks later, it's gonna be something else. So, I think we need to be really careful about what we putting our energies into, and I think our fight should be about keeping the power in the parents' control. Because the issue will change, but if the root is that we are keeping the power in the parents' control, it shouldn't be in the school board's control, it shouldn't be in the government's control. And there are processes that we can do, I believe wholeheartedly, that can accomplish that. So, the other thing that I've had to do for myself, and I encouraged everybody else to do, is I had to go back and re-educate myself, just on basic government. You know, I mean, what is my expectation? What is the school board supposed to be doing? What is the Betsy Board? I didn't even know what the Betsy Board was, to be totally honest. I had to educate myself. What should I expect from my people who are in office? So, we have to be educated on what our expectations are, so we can, we can know where to hit them, and how we can attack it in an effective way. So, I encourage everybody to go and kind of revisit that, and see how our government is structured all the way up, so that we are prepared, and where we can actually do something that has good outcomes. Because, you know, when I went to the meeting last Friday, I told my daughter, I drove in from Baton Rouge, and I told her, I said, look, I said, I'm gonna tell you, I said, this is not about everybody meeting to say how pissed off we are, because everybody knows we are, we're all angry. It's about actually doing something. And I work a full-time job, I have a lot on my plate too, but this is important. We have to invest in this, it has to happen. So, that's all I needed to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I think it was Tanya. Thank you for going back and reviewing basic government, because that's very important. And I wanted to let you know that people are calling on all of us as legislators, and right here, you're preaching to the choir, I'll leave that right there. But to let you know, the legislature is not in session. We basically have two jobs, we make laws, and we decide the state by We make laws and we decide the state budget. Almost everything else we do is lanyard. And we enjoy it. That's why we're here. We feel it's important. We feel it's a calling. We feel that if we do anything less, then we're going to have to answer to God for that, for not doing what he called us to do. So yes, we want to hear from you. Yes, it helps when we hear from you in great numbers. Yes, we want to fix things and change things. Not everything that we're talking about here today can be fixed by us passing a state law. But those things that can, we're willing. We try. We have tried. We have all carried bills that have failed. We have all carried bills that have been vetoed. Yeah, well, yeah, we, there were 28 vetoed. We ended up in override session, but that's a story for another day. So we are trying. But I just wanted to point out that we don't go back in session till March. March of next year. We can't wait for state laws to change. That's March of next year. People are dying right now. We can't wait that long. So when you understand which parts of the government do which jobs, it helps you to make your strike more surgical, to get right to the person or the people or the body that have the authority. Right now, the issue being masks on the faces of children, that's a Betsy decision. That's why we were, we were so distraught that they adjourned their meeting before even dealing with that one item. Just so you know, a public body has the ability to move items around on their agenda if they choose to. When a public body comes into a meeting and they have nine items on their agenda and they have a room full of, I don't know what it was, 300 people, and they know that 250 of them are there for that one item, that public body has the ability to bring up that item first so that they can clear the room if what they're really worried about are germs in a room. So, yeah, I'm a little perturbed about that. We have, we have issued a couple of letters. They're going out tonight, tomorrow to Betsy that many legislators have signed on to basically ask Betsy, "Do your job." Well, depending on the wording of some of the letters, one of them I signed says, "Do your job or resign." Because as public servants, as, as elected officials, the bodies that, that are legislative in nature are supposed to be the voice of the people. And so when you have a legislative body that won't listen to the people, unless you've elected a bunch of psychics, we're not going to get very far in doing what the people are asking for. So, so thank you for going back and looking at how government is organized and for trying to learn which government people you need to talk to. As far as all of these health mandates that we're under, that's the governor. That's not the legislature. It's difficult when we walk into a meeting as legislators and people point at us and say, "Why are we, why do you have us under a mandate?" It's like, oh, no. We are trying to end the mandate. We've been trying to end the mandate for many months now. You might have heard of a certain petition that we signed. That petition is stuck in court under a judge that was appointed by the governor, and we're still waiting. So, yes, we are working, we're trying to work within the authority that we have in our elected position, just as all other elected officials are doing the job that's within their elected office to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Rhodes. I have a son in college, and I'm very concerned about the vaccination mandates and how we can get around this. Because, yeah, they're saying, okay, right now, yeah, you can fill out this form. But next week, it's going to be approved. FDA approved. This vaccine is going to be approved, and they're going to try to make our children take it. And I just, I just don't believe that we should be forced, they should be forced to take it. And yes, he's 20 years old, so he has his own choice. He doesn't want to take it. I'm his parent. I'm trying to navigate, help him. How are we going to get by this? And any suggestions?
I do. Yes, ma'am. My office has worked for about six months with many colleges and universities around the state to combat the mandate, which is illegal. It's illegal for colleges and universities to mandate a shot under emergency use authorization. When that goes away, we still have three waivers, three exemptions, religious, philosophical, and medical. If you don't know how to, how to fill one out or you don't have one, I'd be glad to give you my office number because we could help you do that. But for all of you who have college students, they can always fill, I mean, complete a waiver, an exemption, to get out of the vaccine, whether it's emergency use or not. They're holding that over our heads and saying, "When that happens, we just want you to know we're going to mandate." They caused, I don't know how many college kids to get the shot, even when they didn't want to because they were afraid to finish their education. If that doesn't fire y'all up, there's something wrong. We say we want to keep our kids in this state, and then we do that? It's absolutely ridiculous. The best way to get out of this is to overturn the declaration of emergency. What that takes is the petition that Representative Amadeus was telling you about. We had a petition, and the governor should have, at that time with 53 signatures, lifted the declaration of emergency, but he didn't. He sent the, took us to court and basically sued the House of Representatives. Is that right? Yeah. Sued the House of Representatives. However, we could do that again, but we need the Senate to have a petition as well. 20 senators. This senator right here is amazing. But we need more of him. We need more of him. He needs help. So what we need from you is to y'all begin to call your senators. I don't care if they're a terribole or not. Get you a list of senators and start calling and demanding them to sign a petition like the House has done. And when those two houses, the House rather and the Senate, those two bodies, I believe that we could get, I think we have a good, a good chance of getting the emergency declaration lifted. We would not be here if we didn't have the emergency declaration. We wouldn't have a problem with masks. We wouldn't have a problem with vaccines. We wouldn't have a problem with employers mandating, none of that, if we had this lifted. This is what's driving everything. You have two people in this state, the governor and Dr. Joe Cantor, that are, that are driving all of this, driving all the issues that we're having. So I'm asking you to call, call your representatives, call your senators. But you have a senator here. You need to call the other senators and ask them to get on board with Senator Facy. Thank you.
I do have a question for you. We, there are several of us that have tried calling. And the ones that are opposed to what you're talking about, they don't even answer. They don't respond. We send them emails. Is there another way we can get in touch with them?
Yeah, you can go to their door and pound it in, knock in front of the door.
Well, take a group of people to their door. Okay, we got a plan.
I believe that if you, if you show up at the office and, and walk up to the door and either knock on it and they don't answer, or go in and the receptionist, their legislative assistant says, "Well, they're not here," or what have you. If you feel that you're being ignored at the door, call the press. Call the press and say, "This group of people, we, we have been trying. We've been calling. We've been emailing. We're getting no response. So we're going to go visit Senator so-and-so or Representative so-and-so and, and see what happens." And every legislator does whatever they feel is best to represent their district as far as what they tell their assistant to do with phone calls and emails and what have you. At my office, we log every call. We log every email. Now, I am trying really hard to return many of the calls, and I'm overwhelmed. So please pray for me and bear with me. But we record every one. And so in, in the case where someone, like last week, sends me an email and says, "I have called and called and called your office and you never call back." Well, we checked the call log. This lady never called my office. So, you know, it happens. But I wanted to add that right now, in state statute, it's RS 17170. That's where the provision is that says that students, all students, this is daycare through college, are required, and this is public, private, even homeschool, all students are required to be vaccinated according to the schedule that's set up by the Office of Public Health. Whenever you have any particular vaccine or all vaccines that you object to for medical, philosophical, or religious reasons, you are able to submit to that school, daycare, or college, your either note from the doctor saying, "This vaccine is contraindicated for this child," or your letter saying, "For religious reasons or whatever reasons, we're not going to do this vaccine." You're supposed to send that into the school or daycare when you are filling out all those admissions papers. And they take that, and they're supposed to accept it. By law, they are required to accept it. And they are supposed to hold that in a file, and that's it. And the only time they're supposed to mess with that file, that, that letter that you've given them, is when there is a declared outbreak, not declared by the principal, a declared outbreak by the Office of Public Health in that school or that community for that particular disease. When there's a declared outbreak, if they pull the file and it says, "Your student," let's say it's measles, "Your student has never had measles and has not had the measles shot, then your student is not supposed to come to class until the outbreak is over." So we have three things going on here. Number one, the COVID shots are not approved yet. Therefore, they cannot legally be mandated yet. There's one that's going to be approved apparently tomorrow. They still can't mandate it here yet. First, it has to go through the Office of Public Health, who has to put it on the schedule for students. When that happens, and I don't know how fast it can happen. It might happen by noon tomorrow. When that happens, then the schools can mandate it. But when that happens, you are able to submit your letter from the doctor or your letter of dissent, and that's supposed to be that. So that's the second thing. The third thing is, but right now, we are under a declared outbreak for COVID. So if you have a student who is of age to receive a COVID shot, and the Office of Public Health adds it to the schedule, and your school requires it, then your student can legally be asked not to come to class until the outbreak is over. When will that be? Well, at this point, there's no end in sight. So this is what we're up against right now. This is the, the whole story. You have a legal right to opt out of any of the shots that are required. You have a, a legal right to not get any shots that are experimental until they're approved and required. And while we're under an outbreak, the school can say, "Don't come to class if you haven't had the shot or if you're not otherwise immune." So that's where we are. So now you understand the whole story.
So another thing that keeps coming up is they're going to fully approve this soon. And if you look at the history of approving vaccines, that full approval doesn't come for years, if not 10 years after it's been out to make sure the safety data is there. This has been out for what, a year? I mean, this is not a real scientific approval. This is a political approval. They won't have the scientific data for another two to three years that they require for everything else before they approve it. So I would keep that in mind, even if they fully authorize it. The data's not there to really justify that full authorization.
Victoria Corns, I spoke at the last one as well. If America falls, the United States of America, they all fall. All the countries are looking to us to stand up. And, I mean, look at them in the streets right now, the tyranny and everything that's going on. And it's insane. And I follow a lot of the other countries because they're speaking truth about the vaccines. And in the USA, they're trying to, you know, totally just, you know, lie about it. And in Australia, they're now going to, they're in full lockdown for weeks now. Full lockdown. You can't even leave the house right now. They're now killing their animals in the neighborhoods so that they don't have to tend to them because they don't want the people coming out of the house. So that's the latest thing I've read. Is that sick or what? I mean, really, killing animals? So don't think that's not going to come here because we never thought this would be here right now. So never doubt. Also, in Australia, as of Thursday, 24,000 kids herded into an arena to get jabbed. As of yesterday, five passed out, two in a coma, and two died, and one had a stroke. I mean, really? Yes, these are children, and they're of age, some of them 18, 19, going off to college. But it is up to us as a parent. They need to come to us for guidance, and they're going to always be our children. And we have to speak to our children and tell them, because these kids are trusting other kids because they're treating it like a dag on, it's a religion right now. It's a sacrament to get that vaccine. The children are posting it and this and that. No. Parents need to advise and guide their children because they don't know what this world is about. I mean, I have a daughter in the medical field. Oh, she got it. After I sat down with her months in advance, went over the VAERS and everything, and she, you know, I don't have a degree in, you know, the medical field, so I don't know what I'm talking about. And like I told her, "I taught you to walk. I taught you to talk, and you're standing here today because of the love that I put in to you. And you're going to trust the medical field over me or your, your friends?" Now, I'm praying that, you know, I may have grandchildren one day because it is about the population. I've done my research. It just saddens me because we're looking at these countries and they're looking to us. We have got to do something. We can't keep sitting back in our comfy little houses. At what point is it enough? I don't have kids in college, but I want to preserve for future grandchildren and my rights. I'm not going to stop living and I'm not going to give up my life because I'm worried about dying. The good Lord already knows my number and when it's up. And if I put my faith into that human vac, humanism of trusting that vaccine, no. I walk in faith and not fear. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's a form in the back on the table. The, as Representative Amadee said, these forms for vaccine exemptions will not be denied. They will be kept by your school. So please, pick one up, fill them out. It doesn't mean that you don't have to get shots. It doesn't mean that you're some anti-vaxer, such as myself, 37 years vaccine free. But please, go ahead and get one, file it, get whatever vaccines you want to get. But it just means that they won't try to shove it down your throat that you have to get every single one of them. Second thing. Attorneys are, you know, like sharks circling the waters right now over these discrimination lawsuits for employers that don't know which way to turn. You know, I've, I've heard that oil and gas is soon to start requiring vaccines as well. Is there anything from the representatives and Senate in the panel that we should just go ahead and start filing with our employers? Are there forms that we are available that we could just go ahead and start filling that out?
Yes. Also, what I wanted to say is, reading lately in the oil and gas industry, me, you know, being in that industry for over 30 years, we have to keep our safety record one and below, or you don't work for the majors. What they're doing, if the, if, what, kind of on our side, OSHA has said, if they require you to get the vaccine, then it becomes a recordable if they have any complications from the vaccine. So that's one positive out of the thing. But overall, I would, as an employee of over 300 people, every time one of them tells me to get the vaccine, I just cringe. Because I, I will say this, and in early days, when I caught COVID, they told me that the, the people vaccinated do not spread the, the COVID virus. Well, we had three girls in our office go get the vaccine. It was amazing. Two days later, seven of us all at one time come down with COVID. So they told me I was crazy, like they tell me that on a bunch of things. But I know what happened. I have the evidence, and you'd have, it'd take a lot to disprove me on that. Thank y'all.
So there's a form available? Is it online or where do we find it?
You can go to America's Frontline Doctors. They have some. I'll be glad to, I mean, Representative Amadee can give you the forms, right? You have some forms. Yeah, she, she can send you the links for, for them. And if you need help, she'll be glad to help you, or her assistant, my assistant. You, you know, there, there are multiple people that will help you do that.
We can put those on We the People, Beryl, if you can send them to us.
J.C. Harmon, Representative Convention Estates. Just want to talk about the COVID issue.
Bring your mic up closer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a, I'm, I'm a retired control systems engineer, which means that I've got a pretty good background in mathematics. And one of the things I did when COVID first came out was there was two, basically, Petrie experiments that were done, not by the government. There was an aircraft carrier called Enterprise where COVID ran rampant on the aircraft carrier. There was also a cruise ship where COVID ran rampant on the cruise ship. If you're familiar with statistical data, you can take that data and you can do what's called an R zero number on that. I don't want to get too technical. But basically, what you can do is, when you run that number, you can see just how contagious and how deadly anything is. Since those two instances were isolated, it's pretty good. Because before this, I was like everybody else. I was scared to death because of what, what was going on in the country and what we were hearing from the press. Now, when you run that number, this is what you find. You find that COVID is contagious, and you find that it will kill people. But you find that it is basically twice as contagious, I mean deadly, as the flu. Now, we all shut the country down because of the flu. Now, were there people, are you going to die from COVID? Yes. You're going to die from COVID if you have certain conditions. You're also going to die from COVID if you're not allowed to get some pre, pre-medicine, as the senator has identified. So should we be running around like crazy people with masks on? No. If you understand what's going on, there's a couple of things that's going on. Number one thing that's going on, if anybody was watching the election, and I don't want to get off on too many tangents, but if you were to watch an election at 2:00 in the morning when six states shut down, you understand what happened with COVID. What happened with COVID was they used that issue to do what they did in the states for mail-out ballots. Now, if you don't understand that, you don't understand what's going on in this country. Now, that's one thing. The second thing is, anyway, anyway, without getting off too, too far a tangent, yeah, the second thing was the money issue. The vaccinations and the cost of this, of what's going on, has been identified by previous people, so I don't need to go into that. But basically, they're making a killing on this because the COVID vaccine is costing 10 times, or 20 times, or 30 times, or 100 times what it would cost to do a regular vaccination, I mean, of preventative care. So the senator's right again, what he was talking about. Because you'll notice, everybody that was talking about what you could do to prevent COVID was silenced. Now, there was a reason there was silence, because it, it, it all drove back to the money issue. So those are the two points I want to make. Now, the last thing I want to talk about is, is what's going on in the schools. I'm going to briefly talk about this because you've got two people up here that are, that, that have, I, I'm on the legislative team for Convention of States. And that means we follow bills. Now, Representative Edmonton and Amade are two champions on this. And I, I want to give especially Representative Amade's speech on the Florida, on the Florida House on SB 10. And if you don't know what SB 10 is, go look it up. She knows what SB 10 is, and I thought her speech on SB 10 knocked it out the park. She did an awesome job on that. The other thing I want to say is, Representative Edmonton had two bills that were vetoed by the governor. One bill was 349. That bill was requiring that COVID be put on ID, on a driver's license. That got vetoed. The second bill was a bill that required government agencies to have, to make you have the shot. That bill got vetoed. Both bills got put on the calendar, and basically, I was going home Wednesday night after the session, depressed because of what happened. Now, I want to highlight one other thing. The rep, the senator, Facy, made a speech, now, this is not about COVID, but this speech was the highlight of the veto session. That was a, that was a bill about fairness in women's sports. After listening to about 45 minutes of why men have to play on baseball, on girls' baseball, girls' teams, he finally got up and made the most sense out of everybody in the legislature. And basically, wanted to know why we don't have, why we can't be a moral country and do the right thing. So I want to, so I'm telling you, what we have up here, as far as our senators and representatives, is the A-team.
Les Bird.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank everybody for being here. I know it's not always easy to go against the grain, so I really appreciate it. I am a wife and a mother of two college-age kids. I also have a six-year-old who I just started homeschooling. And so he don't have to wear a mask, and we can learn and read. I'm also in nurse practitioner school. So I am in graduate school, schooling next to him. It's a sacrifice that I'm blessed to be able to make because my husband works so hard. I don't even know what my question is anymore because I know, Beryl, you kind of addressed the exemption. I feel like I'm backed in a corner. When, you know, when it comes to the medical field, it's, I'm so tired of people trying to shame people. It's so ridiculous. But I feel like I'm backed in a corner right now, and I'm, I'm just nervous. If I give him this exemption form, I, I want to say I've read in the past, like, there was no exceptions, like, with the flu. Because I usually never take the flu shot either. But because it's mandatory, I did it last year. I do not want to take this vaccine, and I will not. I am willing to go somewhere else, but that is such a hassle. And I do not want to have to do that. My husband also, his job is totally pushing them, bullying them, into getting this vaccine he can't afford. Like, he sits less, that's easy. You know, you can, I can just stay out of school. Fine, I'll take care of that later. But his job is what allows me to do what I'm doing. I mean, I've been taught through nursing school to be, to be an advocate, you know, to advocate for my patients and to have, to be autonomous. And I can't do that, you know? It's, there's so many restrictions. So I guess my question really was more the legality part. As far as schools, like I said, I know you did go over that a little bit. And that's really why I came here tonight, because I just, like I said, I feel backed in a corner, and I'm ready to fight. I just don't know where to go, the people, the connections. I need to know that information.
Thank you for the question. Let me say, first of all, I'm so sorry that you and your husband are having to make these kinds of decisions right now. It's tough, and you are not alone, by any means. I can tell you by the phone calls and emails. And let's, let's go back to before COVID, before that was a household word. Ever since I got in the legislature, the people I heard from the most concerning vaccines were nursing students. And here's the reason. Under state law, as I had explained before, students from daycare to college are required to get certain vaccines, certain immunizations, in order to enroll in school. And there are exemption provisions. And the schools would accept those. But you might be about to go into clinicals. And so although nursing school at Nichols, let's say, was happy to have you as a nursing student all this time and not require you to go get the flu shot, suddenly, the clinic or the hospital where you're about to do clinicals requires it of all their employees, and therefore, they want to require it of you. Well, that is no longer a student question. That's more of an employee question. And the laws that are the strongest for, now, okay, let me say it again. I'm not an attorney, okay? The laws that seem to be the strongest for protecting employees concerning vaccines or vaccine exemptions are federal law. So under federal law, an employer is still not supposed to be able to require you without an option for an exemption. But it seems that in the medical community, it was the flu shot that was a stickler. And up until 2019, all of the students that I spoke with were able to continue with clinicals, and all of the employees that I spoke with in a medical facility were able to continue without having to take the flu shot as long as they put on a mask for flu season. So prior to that, it wasn't a big deal. 2017 or 18, they had, they could say, "I'm not going to do the flu shot this year," but they had to wear a mask throughout flu season. But something changed in 2019. The medical facilities started saying, "No. Take the shot or don't come." And so this was before COVID. Now, because we were not able to sufficiently push back in 2017, 18, or 19, here we are. And so I don't have an easy answer for you. I know the law, as I explained, protects you. But what I'm seeing right now is, we're not following, not we, they're not following the law. And I've been complaining for months, where are the attorneys? Where are the class action lawsuits? So I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you that's going to make your decisions any more easy or comfortable. It does tempt me to go to law school. Of course, I guess right now, I'd need to go get a vaccine for that. But anyway. But if I go to law school, we're talking, it's years away, so I still can't help you right now. But what I do want to let you know is, you're not alone. Keep an ear out. Most of us in this room can't really afford to go out tomorrow and hire an attorney, even if we could find one who would take the case. But class action lawsuits are beginning. They're not necessarily going to help you get a good paycheck in the month of September, but it's kind of the, the only thing moving forward right now. So besides that, and I'll put on my preacher hat here for a moment. Just remember, if you're a person of faith, the Lord is your provider, not your boss. Bosses come and go. There can be other jobs, but you go before God, and you pray about that. You have to decide. I can't make that decision for you.
And thank you, but I just have one more suggestion. I, I think that since my legislation got vetoed, it's like we opened the door, and everybody's mandating now because they know that they can. But what I would suggest, everybody that you know that is having issues like this, call the Attorney General. Let them start making a list of all the people in the state that are having issues with colleges and universities. He is the attorney for us in this, in this state. And it's Jeff Landry, in case you don't know. But I just, I just thought of that, that that might be a good idea, that everybody you know that has an issue, call and log it with them. And then, you know, who knows what could happen? You know, maybe, I don't know. But I just think that that's something that's easy to do, and you can do it along with trying to do your exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. If you guys would join me in giving our panel and speakers a hand, thanking them for being here.
I just got one thing to ask.
Yes.
Prayers, please. That's all I can say.
Yes.
We got a lot of tough things and a lot of tough things happening. But I just ask for prayer, because that's what I do every day, just trying to do the right thing. But we definitely have our challenges, though. But I'd appreciate that. Thank you.